Pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day. Welcome to the February 14th, 2017 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees. It looks like we now have our first agenda item here. Let's draw it in. So I'm gonna move it over to the microphone over there. Don't sit down Sergeant Dunn. I'll light you up here with me. So tonight we're honoring some of our longest-term employees here. If you don't know, Nikon, which is the New York Conference of Mayors, they have a program to recognize any employees, village or city employees with 25 or more years with a single municipality, and we happen to have three of those with us here tonight. They all happen to be police officers, so we'll bring them up first. 25 years. We'll start with Officer Alberg. He came on board in April of 91. And we got Officer Kelly. He came on 1990. I was still in high school when these guys came on. The goal then was to avoid them at all costs. I definitely enjoyed working with them. Last but not least, Officer Hannenberg. He's over 30 years. I was in my first semester of Will School when he came aboard. Thank you so much. It's an honor to serve with all you guys. We have certificates here from Nikon for each of you. 25 years. Officer Alberg. Make sure you get the right one. 25 years. Officer Kelly.
Thank you, sir.
Of course. 30 years. Officer Hannenberg.
Thank you, sir.
So I think we all, these guys, a round of applause. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any guys want to give a speech? So our next order of business on the agenda is a resolution related to the anchorage barges in the Hudson River. I wanted to acknowledge David Walser. He kind of brought this to the, to light here, brought it, focused our attention on it. So I have the resolution here. I'll make a motion that we pass it at the conclusion. I'll read it. So...
Did we get a copy of that?
Yes, you did. Pass it to everybody.
Oh, one email, but we don't have one tonight. Hard copy.
Would you like...
Oh, I can read it. I guess it's okay.
Okay. So this is a resolution from the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck urging the United States Coast Guard to reject proposed rule. There's a number there. In relation to Hudson River Anchorage Grounds. Whereas in proposed rule, US Coast Guard 2016-0132, the Coast Guard is considering establishing new anchorage grounds in Hudson River from Yonkers, New York, to Kingston, New York, and whereas the Village of Rhinebeck operates a public water system that relies on clean water from the Hudson River to provide safe drinking water to over 1,600 individual customers and many thousands of residents of and visitors to the Village of Rhinebeck and the town of Rhinebeck, including the hamlet of Rhine Cliff. And whereas the establishment of these proposed anchorage sites will expose this water system to increasing risk of contamination. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck hereby confirms its opposition to this proposal and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rhinebeck does hereby direct that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the members of the United States Congress representing the Village of Rhinebeck. Is there a second? To second up the resolution? Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank you for doing that. I think that's a noted worthy thing to do. And if anybody else would like to know that there's also an event coming up this Thursday in Hyde Park at the St. James Episcopal Church, and it's called "The River at Risk," the Hudson River at Risk. So I would encourage everybody to learn more about by attending that event this Thursday at 7:00.
I also commend you for coming to our side on this, Keith, but I have one question. Did we get this resolution from River Keepers or from Sina Hudson?
We did not. There was a sample submitted from Sina Hudson, but after it was brought to our attention by Mr. Walser, I contacted the village attorney, and we wanted one that would be very specific to our water system. So...
And how much did that cost us instead of using a three-line? How many hours did that take?
We'll have to wait to see the bill, but the one that was submitted after the fact from Sina Hudson was, again, sample would still need to have been adjusted by the village attorney to meet our format and our specifications.
Also, I commend this, but it's too little, too late. When the public comment period ended December 6th, this basically is worthless. So we've taken time and expense on something that is past the deadline.
Where were you on December 6th?
Yeah.
I was probably in...
You probably were. And if you find it to be worthless, feel free to vote against it. That's your...
I've been working on it for over a year, so I'm going to vote yes on it, but it's too little, too late.
Well, it would've been nice if it was brought to the Board beforehand.
It'd be nice if you had cheated something.
Yeah. Maybe if you were here in November or January, you could've, could've brought it to us beforehand. But thanks again to Mr. Walser.
End of December 6th.
And November was before December 6th. Any further discussion on that? Alls in favor?
Aye.
For nothing.
Well, while you may think it's worthless and nothing, I have been in contact with Mayor Griffith from the Village of Tidley and have sent him our version, because they're working on it as well. They haven't passed a resolution against it. I know you were there at the Northern Dutchess Alliance Breakfast, and this topic came up, and it seems like the Northern Dutchess community, you know, certainly does not see this as a worthless effort. And as Gary said, there's ongoing attention being brought to the issue. So that's disappointing that you find it to be worthless. We'll move on to county legislator Joel Tyner.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Love is in the air. Thank you for, you feel it? Thank you for passing that resolution. It's ironic, because September 20th last year, the Ulster County Legislature and the Westchester County Legislature, I think in the same evening, both unanimously passed very strong resolutions. And since about September, you know, I got Nicky Struinsky and a bunch of other county legislators on board, and they've never even allowed it onto the agenda for Committee Day in the Dutchess County Legislature. Yeah. This is democracy in action. Actually, as a matter of fact, if you're interested, the, you know, I've been in there since '04. It used to be that they allowed memorializing resolutions, like what you just passed, onto the agenda for Committee Day, and they did that for a long time. Over the last four or five years, they haven't done that. And now they want to actually change the meeting rules. So I urge people, the next Committee Day for the county legislature is this Thursday at 6:30 at the Bardabon, and they actually want to change the rules so that legislators, I can't even bring up during other business, during the county legislature meetings, I can't even bring up an issue like that. I'm not, I'm not lying to you. So if you guys are free, I put this out to the media. Nobody in the media wants to report on it. This Thursday at 6:30 and 7:00, feel free to get on down to the Bardabon and ask why that's being done. I put in yet another call to the Dutchess County Commissioner of Planning and Development, Owen Rafter, on the Crystal Lake thing and the CDBG, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to do what I can on that. I urge people to check out democracycollaborative.org. They came out with a publication called Strategies for Financing the Inclusive Economy. Forty percent of jobs these days are part-time, temporary, or contingency, and there's a lot of really amazing innovative ideas at that website that are working in places like Cleveland, actually Rochester, New York City to a certain extent. So it's democracycollaborative.org. You know, nine years ago, the Northern Dutchess Alliance put out this report, this, you know, a blueprint for a new economy. So what's, what's the update? You know, what jobs have come in that were recommended to fill the gaps? That needs to be done. I have a friend who's on the totally opposite side of the political spectrum from me. She runs the Chamber of Commerce in Putnam County, and she loves to tease me about how there's no consumer protection at all in Dutchess County. So one of the things I put in the email to the village clerk this morning was about electrician licensing, licensing of home improvement contractors, and licensing of plumbers, because Putnam County is conservative, rock-ribbed, solid Republican, and they have some very strong consumer protection. We don't even have an Office of Consumer Affairs anymore in the county government. Sometimes the unions get involved, trying to get the pass, pass this legislation. I've already made it public. I'm gonna try to get those legislations, those laws passed, whether or not the unions are in love with them or not. Because I've, you know, back in 2008, 2009, ran into some sticky wickets with some folks in Rhinebeck and Clinton over the electrician licensing. It's beyond ridiculous that, you know, Sue Serino's doing great work this fall, going around doing forums about the senior scams and the consumer fraud, but we don't have an Office of Consumer Affairs in Dutchess County Government, and we have no, there's lots of other counties in the Hudson Valley where electricians are licensed and plumbers are licensed and home improvement contractors are licensed, and they have a county government with an Office of Consumer Affairs. So this is the route made in me coming out. This is the consumer advocate. So it's not gonna be easy to get those pieces of legislation passed. If you're interested, please contact me, 876-248-464245. One of the things I emailed Pat this morning about the local impact of the state budget. The state budget's gonna be done. It's like the train's running on time. Who cares if it's an awful state budget? And the, you know, the revenue sharing with the municipalities is yet again underfunded. The state budget's done on time. You have an opportunity right now to point out how ridiculous it would be for them not to extend or expand the millionaire's tax, because if that millionaire's tax is not extended past the end of this year, and that decision's gonna be made in the next two months, that's a $4 billion hole in the state budget. And if you think you're not getting enough money now from Albany, it's gonna be much less. So if you go to the Fiscal Policy Institute website, that's fiscalpolicy.org, reach out to Kevin, Kao, reach out to Sue Serino. There's a toll-free number for Cuomo. Everybody near I wish would call. Not just on behalf of county funding and village funding, town funding, school funding. It's 877-255-9417. You can call the governor's office, anybody in the Assembly, anybody in the Senate. The, I'm the sort of the liaison. They, Chairman Bork and Chairman Rollison picked me to be the liaison from the county legislature to the Dutchess County EMC, the Environmental Management Council. And a few weeks ago, they wrote a very strong letter to basically everybody in Washington saying, please don't kill off the EPA. So I'm just, I'm just sharing that with you. Tomorrow, 4:30 at Warriors Park in Poughkeepsie, there's a bunch of us gathering for a press conference and rally on that. It'd be nice to have a federal government who cared about, you know, air that we can breathe and water we can drink, and about the frac barges. I am, I'm not, you know, that, if you go to riverkeeper.org or Steve Hopkins' website, hudsonriverancherages.org, January 20th, the fossil fuel industry admitted that the frac barges, it's all about, it's all about the, the change where oil can be exported to other countries. That's what it's about. The last thing I was gonna say is, the last thing I put in my email to the village clerk this morning was ways to make Rhinebeck safer. I still am looking for support locally. I'm trying to press the county legislature leadership and the county executive. There's no reason why, and I, Steve Hannenberg was my, well, seventh grade, he was my junior league coach. I played for American Legion. I got a, they had one hit all year. But the domestic abuse response team, there's no reason why we can't have an embedded police officer here in Rhinebeck, here in Wapender. That was a recommendation made two years ago, and domestic violence is a very real issue here in Rhinebeck. The other way is, if you Google, this just came out a month ago, the University of California, San Diego, they looked at 600 different communities all across the country, sanctuary cities, the unemployment rate is lower. The crime, the crime is, the crime is lower. I went to a big forum and vassled on that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
Yep.
All right. We'll start with our treasurer's report, Karen.
Okay. The treasurer's report for the Village of Rhinebeck is for the period of January 1st to January 31st. The general fund ended the month with $1,114,576.30. The water fund ended the month with $616,833.32. And the sewer fund ended the month with $698,023.96. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $115,469.89. In the water fund, $54,997.36. In the sewer fund, $21,615.84. Capital projects for the water system improvement submitted was a bill for $2,454.58. In the escrow account, $2,097. The operating statement is provided for the monthly expenses through the period of February 14th. The water and sewer, the adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department liaisons and are presented for authorization. Thirty-sixty-day late notices for water and sewer bills. There's been some confusion by our customers with the 60-day late notice. It is generated a week or so before the next quarterly billing for that zone with a $25 collection fee added. We have to wait until after the month, monthly due date, to apply that and send it out, which only gives the customer about a week to pay it, and if it's not paid within that small timeframe, then new charges are already generated. So my recommendation would be to only send out the 30-day notice and inform the customer that there will be a collection fee added after 60 days. Eliminate the 60-day notice because the next bill is right there and a comment can be added to the bill. The budget for 2017, 2018, prices are being obtained for insurances, long-term debt, and village assessed value amount from the county will be received soon. For the sewer department, Pete is Pete Ratchin, the chief operator, is in need of purchasing a new muffin monster. And he has made every effort to obtain quotes. However, it is manufactured by a sole source, as presented and was written to us by the, by the sole source. Other equipment is presented with two written quotes. I asked the Board to authorize the purchase and the corresponding transfer of funds to the capital projects for the muffin monster, the portable suspended solids meter, and the ultraviolet lamp equipment totaling $32,488.75. For the fire department...
Karen, can we just take a pause there?
Oh, I was just going right on.
Let's take care of these ones we got, then we'll move on to the fire department.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the water adjustments that have been made.
Second.
Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the sewer department adjustments made.
Second. Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation related to the 30 and 60-day notices.
Yeah. I'd like to just comment on, this is something Karen and I have discussed.
Is that a second?
Yes, I'll second it. Thank you. I like, Karen and I have discussed this frequently, and I also mentioned it to Howie. And as Karen mentioned, it is confusing to our customers in terms of how the billing cycle works, and this cleans up that communication to them, and it also helps with Karen and Chrissy at the office in terms of the billing. So I think it's a great thing to do for, you know, to streamline our process and to communicate with our customers.
Anybody else? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Under the sewer one?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to allow Karen to transfer the money into the capital equipment of $32,488.75 for the purchase of a new muffin monster. This is equipment that grinds rags and debris prior to entering the system.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to the fire department.
Okay. So Kyle will discuss the need to purchase new SCOTPACs.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Heath and the rest of the Village Board. What we've, what we've come upon is that in the 2016 and '17 budget year, we budgeted for new SCOTPACs to start replacing the current SCOTPACs that we have here. If anybody's wondering what a SCOTPAC is, it's a self-contained breathing apparatus that is, that we wear going into a fire or any kind of hazard material or atmosphere that will protect us from any kind of supergases and toxics and so forth. Well, the problem that we've had is with when we started purchasing the SCOTPACs to start weeding out the older SCOTPACs is that we are not compatible with our old SCOTPACs to the new SCOTPACs. What it means is that they don't make, they don't meet the NFPA standards. So the new PACs are coming in with a low-pressure disconnect. It's gonna be a little complicated. Low-pressure disconnect, so if you run into a problem, then you can disconnect your hose from your regulator and then you can connect into another regulator that you're with, another fireman, from either your department or a neighboring department. Also comes with a fast-team connection or another buddy breathing system in the back. Again, if you run into a problem, you're out of air, it can be connected. So what this means is, is that we essentially right now have two different style PACs. My concern is, is being a safety issue of training people on two different style PACs. What PACs do you grab to go to what call and so forth? Are they gonna be together, not together? And if there is a problem, how are we going to get our members out safely? It also comes with a different regulator system that gives us a little more heads-up display in the regulators with the newer PACs that lets us know earlier involved in the incident when we're starting to get low on air, where the older PACs don't give us that notification. So as speaking with Karen and speaking with Heath and Scott, it is my proposal that we go out and we purchase these PACs all at once, because we are, we kind of missed the boat in the last seven to 10 years to upgrade their parts to where they need to be. We've gone, I don't say the bare minimum, we've got everything that meets NFPA standards, but we didn't go with the X3 Extreme PAC. We went with the standard wireframing PAC, alligator clips, not the parachute clips, and so forth. But for as far as regulator, hoses, buddy system, fast-team system, they will meet the NFPA standards.
How many, how many of these would that purchase?
Twenty-three.
And that's how many we need?
Yes.
Does the, do the old ones have any value at all?
They, they, we did get a slight trade-in value on those, and it's all listed out in a quote that we have here. We did save, the problem that we rectified though is that we know in five years that all the bottles have expired. They're being hydrotested now. They, this will be the last of the hydrotests. They're good for five years. We're gonna start with 2017, '18 budget to replace 46 bottles over the next five years. Because if we don't start that program now, it'll be a $50,000 bill in five years that we don't want to impose. As, you know, and stay to the upgrades, either with the, with the PACs itself or with the bottles. And as long as we stay with the upgrades, then we should be able to get a long range of life expectancy out of these PACs by staying with NFPA standards.
Great, Kyle.
So...
Excuse me, Kyle, was this for this year's budget or you want to put it into next year's?
No, this is, this is this year's. And Karen can explain that we've sat down and gone over the money and the capital and plus our budget now, and she can explain that the, that the money's available.
Okay. So as Kyle explained, they had put in the annual operating budget, the $15,000 for a few of the PACs that they had planned on replacing. The aerial truck has been paid off, so there's $25,000 in, for this year that they can use for that. And the capital improvement account for the fire department, they're looking to take $93,000, the majority of it out of there. However, at the end of this fiscal year, they will have $50,000 transferred back into there, and then next year is budgeted another 50. So after the end of next fiscal year, they'll be right back with having $100,000 in there.
Equipment reserve.
Correct. So we sat down and went over the numbers, and it works that they can do that this year, knowing that those amounts will be transferred next year.
So the amount that's coming out of the equipment reserve, so there's a certain amount that's budgeted, 15, and then there was 25 that was allocated to the ladder, to the truck, so that's 40, right? And then how much are we moving from the equipment reserve?
$93,000.
And how much is in there now?
Well, I'd like to move that we approve that transfer.
Second. Discussion.
I think it's a safety is, Frank, is counted out here.
Yes, I do, I do agree. So as I said before, it's, it's, we'll have one standard across the board for 23 PACs and a mix.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah, just like, that's something you didn't mention, but we talked about in our discussion that, for those of us that aren't participants in the fire service, not every firefighter has an individual PAC. The PACs are on the truck, so when the firefighters go to grab one, if we didn't do this, there'd be two different systems which would interact differently with the firefighter and put them at some degree of unnecessary risk. Also, on the, our capital reserve, this would still put us on track to be saving for the replacement of the ladder truck, which would be on a scheduled replacement. So we should be able to still pay for, pay for that truck when the time comes out of, if not in full, out of the capital reserve, at least the majority of it. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That it for you, Karen?
That's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
So the police report for last month, there were a total of 30 incidents in the town, 86 incidents in the village, 17 tickets in the town, 69 in the village, a total of seven arrests and four arrests. That's all I have for the police department. Fire?
Yep. The fire department's report for the month of January 2016, 2017. There were a total of 65 alarms for the fire department, 19 calls, fire calls total. Nine in the town, eight in the village, provided mutual aid twice to Red Hook. For the month of January, there were 43 EMS calls, 11 in the town, 20 in the village, and provided mutual aid four times to Hillside, two times to Rhine Cliff, and five times to Red Hook, and one time to West Clinton. There were also three motor vehicle accidents in the town and zero in the village. The ambulance did not respond to three calls, therefore their response percentage was 93%. On January 31st, 2017, firefighter Eric Stroka was injured in the line of duty while operating at a truck fire. Subsequently, he has had surgery to his leg and is recovering at home. Quick recovery to Eric. Thank you for, for serving and protecting us all. And a reminder to all homeowners to clear their fire hydrants during the snow that we recently got. I also have here a recommendation from Rhinebeck Fire Department, Inc., that they had had a meeting on the 16th of January, and the department investigating committee had an applicant, and they found the applicant favorable for consideration by the village board to add him to our firefighter roster. They recommend that Sean Warman of 274 Rhine Cliff Road, Rhinebeck, be added to the roster. So I'd like to make a motion that the village board approve the addition of Sean Warman to the fire department.
Second. Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. So building, planning, and zoning. As everybody knows, we have been working towards some significant amendments to our zoning code. Our zoning commission had met for a long time, and we've had one public hearing. There are clearly a couple of issues that will need some more time and attention to get it right. So I'd like to make a motion at this point to remove the portions of that proposed amendment that deal with short-term rentals, farm animals, and adult uses from the proposal so that we can deal with those separately in time.
Second. Discussion? Yes, so upon that proposal, I'd like to work together with you to create some bigger committees to, to join the zoning commission. Obviously, we've all gotten correspondence from different people in, in the community with different concerns, lots of people coming from different, different angles and different aspects, all good input and all good information. And that's why we worked as a zoning commission and came before the public, for the public hearing, got all this great feedback. We've taken the feedback, we've inputted into the latest draft, but as Heath just said, we're gonna take those pieces, those three critical pieces out, form committees, and continue to work with those to get them so that it's something this, the entire community could, could work, get behind. So, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to take at least, or maybe work with you to put together those committees we can, or we can reach out, maybe put a public notice out to, for the formation of these committees.
Right, so this would be our, assuming the motion passes, this would be our first request for volunteers to serve on that committee to help us deal, particularly on a committee to deal with the short-term rental issue and then a separate committee for the farm animal issue. The other, the adult use issue is just something in our code that didn't line up with state law. So, we have to remove it and, and get that process or that language correct. But the goal is to allow all of the other amendments, it's a pretty comprehensive document that, you know, as we know, went page for page through the, through the whole code. So, we can allow those to move forward and get our planning board, zoning board, appeals working with those revisions with, obviously the removal of these.
Right, so, so we'll take this, we'll take the draft, we'll remove those three items from this draft, we'll issue it, and then we'll continue to meet as a public in a public hearing to get feedback on, on the draft of the, of the zoning laws minus that. And then we'll form those committees and continue to work with those committees and then add those at a later date.
So, the village attorney will be working on the removal so that all the pieces that, that would affect these issues are removed. Then we'll have a new document and we'll, our public hearing remains open. We'll have another scheduled date to hear from the public on that again. Any further discussion on it?
I, I'd just like to just say that I'd like to have the trustees also included on those committees so we can participate as well.
Yeah, we'll have the participants from the village government, probably from the planning zoning board, someone or two from this board, and then, you know, representatives from the public that represent, you know, different, yeah, different, yeah, interested parties.
If we have, if we have three.
Could you repeat the three things? It was, it was the?
It's short-term rentals, farm animals, and adult uses.
Adult uses?
Adult uses, yes.
Okay.
If we have three people from the trustees from the board and that's people like.
Yeah, we don't want them to.
We can make.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that. Any further discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, I know you have a comment, but we're gonna try to move along and then when we get to that, you know, you're more than happy to, happy to talk to us once we get to that session, okay?
Okay.
Highway? Before Highway gets started, I'd just like to thank the Highway Department in addition to police officers, some of the contractors we had out there today. I know some people are a little nervous about having streets cleared on Valentine's Day, but they got out there first thing this morning and right around little afternoon, everything was cleared. So, once you're done here, feel free to go out and, you know, enjoy a nice time in the village for Valentine's Day.
Before you go into Highway, Scott, there's, I'd just like to bring up, you also have in the report this time from the Village and Planning Board and Zoning Board. Were you gonna address those issues at all that were included into the minute? The Algeme Agricultural Association, Beadman Arms, and Owl Cut, or is it just for information right now?
That's just for information. The monthly report here, these are things that have been before the planning board. So, this is really just for your information, just to see how those applications have proceeded.
Yeah, that was.
You get those, you get those every month.
Well, not in so much details, and this time it was nice to have this detail and I like that. Just a comment on Algeme Agricultural Association?
Yes.
All right, you know, so this has been brought up as an agricultural association and this is in regard to the proposed farm stand, the Hobson property, right?
Yep.
So, what is the process in terms of, just for my clarification, what is the process? As this goes forward to the zoning board of approval?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Appealed and they say yea or nay.
Correct.
Right, and then there's a public hearing that's fairly open for public comment to participate in that.
Correct.
Right. It's my understanding that is since it's in the agricultural district, is this just a formality for us or is this something that we can really enforce with our, with our master plan?
Um, it's probably just a formality because agriculture a lot of times has precedence over any kind of local law. I don't know the full details behind this, but we could look into it.
It's an issue that's being dealt with, with by the village attorney and then interested parties and they're working through it. And that's why the public hearing was adjourned until February 21st. So, it's, it's an issue for, to the planning board.
So, there's more time to discuss before it goes to, before there's a ruling by the agricultural department, right, on, on this issue?
Well, it's still open.
It's still open.
That's why it's been adjourned.
Right.
And the next hearing for the public is February 21st.
Yes.
Correct.
If it goes to agricultural department, is there a chance for the public to be heard as well on that or is that just a decision that they make absent a public comment?
But we have to wait for comment from the village attorney who's working that issue.
Okay.
Anything else on?
Just on the, on the Beadman Arms, I know there was an issue with a tree. And has that also been addressed with the, you know?
Again, so that, has that been addressed?
Yeah. Does the tree committee, Gina, do you know if the tree committee's been involved?
They had a read-in on that and we didn't meet this month because May was away and Shirley was, had the flu.
I'm not so that sure that that tree would be in the purview of the tree committee though. It's not in the right way.
That's kinda why I'm asking, what is the, you know?
Well, I mean, the tree committee really can only rule on trees that are in the right way.
Or planted in the brow.
Right, so this is not, well, but this is not in the brow.
Are you referencing something from the minutes here?
Yeah, I don't see anything about a tree.
No, I know, but it was just general.
Well, there's a tree, there's a tree in the middle of that, in the middle of that lawn square, you know, that's gonna be affected by the addition of the, by the addition they planned for the front of the building.
Right.
So, but yeah.
Which is still a proposal as of right now, so that they're working through.
Okay, thank you.
Heath, I'm glad you brought up about clearing the snow today because why was that chosen to be done during the day? I had two complaints from business owners and I know Pat had, how many complaints did you get, Pat? Calls?
I had more emails than calls.
Yeah, we had a number of concerns. They used to do it through the night.
Yeah, this is to save money.
How much money did we save?
I don't know. We used to spend about $5,000 when we did it at night because overtime costs and hiring out. We also, we did have to hire out of the contractors to stay too, but we can figure out how much we saved by doing it during the day.
And even figuring in the accident that we had from that, is that gonna eat into the money that we saved?
We had an accident?
And inconveniencing, inconveniencing thousands of people trying to get in and out of the bank and the post office and businesses, you know, where's the trade?
Let's go back to a couple of years ago when they did it through the night. It required a number of contractors. We had different equipment and there were as many, if not more, complaints at that time. There, they had to block off the streets. I think Valentine's Day was involved maybe four years ago. They posted the streets and all the business owners were, I can't say all, but many of them were unhappy because there was limited parking for the evening dinner crowd and the night crowd on Valentine's Day. So, I wanna say it was about three years ago when we got the Bobcat. We, Howie and I worked together with the Highway Department and we developed a plan that used the Bobcat with the snowblower. We got an attachment that allows it to load trucks. So, what used to be a, you know, what a 7:00 PM to say, 7:00 AM project with our crew and a lot of contractors today was completed by before, just afternoon time. And it allowed for safe access for everyone to the village, the businesses in the village. And I'm sure that people are enjoying that access right now.
We, we inconvenience people at night?
Well, why we have the no parking over the winter hours? Isn't that so we can clear the snow in the middle of the night? That's why we have no parking on the streets during winter.
That's for plowing so that people's cars don't get hit by, by the big plows and the plows don't have to go out and around the cars, which leaves a mess when the car leaves. So, but this is, the snow removal portion which was completed today has always been different than standard plowing immediately after a storm. So, this particular process only happens when we have, you know, either a big storm or a couple moderate storms that results in buildup of snow that makes it unsafe for people to parallel park and unsafe for them to access the sidewalks. So, it's kinda two different things there.
And how many years has it been done like this that it's been done during the day?
This is, this is probably, we didn't do it last year because of the snow, but the year before we did it. That was the first year, I think. So, we did it, I think, once or twice that year and then this would be the third time. So, we're able to do it with primarily, primarily our own personnel, not overtime. They have daylight, they have the support of the police officers. So, it's a much safer and more efficient operation, time-wise and expense-wise.
With the purchase of the Bobcat, with the snow attachment, the snowblower, this, this becomes more efficient by using that piece of equipment.
Did the Highway Department agree with this decision?
Yeah, they've been doing it, like we said, this is the third time they've done it. Two, two, two years ago they did it twice. Last year they didn't do it because there's no snow. And today they did. We've been planning this since last Thursday. So, yes, they did a fantastic job as did the police department who provided support out there. And of course, there will always be, you know, businesses that are negatively affected at nine in the morning and there will be businesses that are negatively affected at, at nine and, at nine at night. So, all said, I, I think it was a success and they should all be committed for the job they did today.
So, I, I haven't seen what they got done. I'll look later, but they did get it all finished?
Yeah, they started a little after six. They got West Market, East Market, and, you know, Route 9 south of the light down to South Street and then up to Livingston or past Terrapin, I believe. So, yeah.
The whole business district.
Yeah.
So, now all the diners out there going out on Valentine's Day, they're having a good time. They don't have to jump over the snow. Thanks. We did have complaints a few, last month about people couldn't get to the restaurants at night.
Right. Pretty much anytime the street is blocked for any reason, we receive complaints and, you know, we do appreciate everybody's patience and cooperation as we, you know, try to make it safe for everybody. Order Department?
Oh, you want me to read the Highway?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'd have it written down too. I'd like to thank the Highway Department for doing a great job today. Jobs completed for the month of January is leaf and brush removal was still done before the snow came. Street sign repairs and installs were done. Mechanical work on all equipment is continuous, servicing all trucks for the winter services. Road prep for cold patch, blacktop repairs and blacktop various locations throughout the village. Surplus, they received one closed bid yesterday. Here it is right here. This is for the truck.
We've got some excess equipment.
We don't know what it's for.
Yeah.
There was a, a whole list of equipment that was put out of the bid.
Okay. I guess this is the winning bid. This is the bid for the sander and what's that say?
I wouldn't tell you. Oh, does it say stairs?
Oh, the, the ramp?
The ramp?
The handicap?
Yeah, aluminum. Yeah, the aluminum stair.
Okay, so this is the bid for the sander and the aluminum stairs. $210. Do I say what's from?
Yeah.
Paul Matthews.
Okay.
So, he's the, the sole bidder. So, I make a motion.
Well, this, go ahead, you make a motion and we can.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to accept this bid for the sander and the aluminum stairs for $210 from Paul Matthews.
Second and discussion?
Uh, the one stipulation was is that the value, the bid that we received was in excess of the scrap value.
The scrap of the stairs, right.
Right, and so John Fenton was determined what the scrap value was because that ramp was pure aluminum.
Right.
And we wanted to make sure that the bid that we received was for more than the scrap value because we could bring it to the scrapyard and get more.
Right, right.
So, John, before we accept that bid, I ask that we check with John to make sure.
So, would you like to amend the motion to put the stipulation that 210 exceeds the?
Yeah, I'd like to amend this motion that the $210 exceeds the scrap value of the aluminum stairs.
That we accept the bid if?
Yes.
The bid exceeds.
Okay, I'd like to amend this motion that we accept this bid for $210 for the sander and the aluminum stairs, that the scrap value of the aluminum stairs exceeds 210 bid.
That's got it. That's got that. Your board just ran for us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the other surplus item is a 2010 Chevy Pickup Colorado, which is from the board.
No, that is not a surplus item.
Well, you're, Gary, do you have that one in your report?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know why it's here. Okay, we have another important note. Truck number 11 presently
does not have a working snow plow. The A-frame that supports the plow has rusted beyond repair. We are still able to cover all snow routes with existing equipment. We are requesting that the village board consider new equipment purchased during the 2017, 2018 budget cycle. I just wanted to make a note that Heath and I have been talking about this. We met with the sales rep last month about getting a new truck that does various tasks and we're, we're requesting that it does, is able to plow snow also. I just wanna say this broke last week during the storm we had last week, truck 11, the snow plow. So, I just wanna say another thing. I met with village engineer Brandy from, from Crawford with John Fenton to discuss fixing the flooding which occurs on West Chestnut and Chestnut Street. We're coming up with a, a plan to try to fix that. That's it for the Highway Department.
Okay, order.
It's always a busy time in the water department, it seems. There's always a lot of activity going on. On our report, the total water treated in terms of gallons was 12,513,000 gallons last month. Previous month was 13, excuse me, 12,513,000 gallons. Previous month was 13,34,000 gallons. And going to the Chevy Colorado, this has been on a jet flow for several times. We've gone back and forth on it. At the last monthly meeting, we approved a bid not to exceed. That was for 76, 7697 from Treeboulds. And we went out and received and updated new bids, you know, because the price had changed over the course of time. Just to remind everybody, this is a 2010 Chevy Colorado and the engine went. And so, we were looking at engine repair versus replacement. So, what we're looking for now is the engine replacement. We agreed to go forward with engine replacement as long as the bids did not exceed the previous one, which they did after looking at getting revised bid because the price went up over the course of time for the engine replacement of that. So, right now we've chosen Treebould Garage to repair the truck at 7645, which includes a $600 core charge that we talked about last time and a $75 towing fee to get it up there to be evaluated. If the core is good, we get the $600 back, but it has to get back sent to Chevy to be evaluated before we do that after it gets pulled. So, the truck is currently up at Treeboulds, beaten under repair to get the engine replaced. Another thing that we've just, that we've been working on for quite some time and I've discussed and we had Crawford Associates in here a while back was the village of Reinbeck Water Treatment Draft and Vulnerability Assessment. We're pretty far along in that in terms of areas of risk. This has to do with sea level rise on the Hudson River and the effects on the water, on our, on our facility down there. And there's three areas that are affected in the very short term. It's our low lift pump station. It's our low lift pump station. Everybody doesn't know what the low lift pump station is. That's basically, we have the line going out into Hudson. It comes back in. The first thing that hits is our low lift pump station, which is at the low point of our plant. That, based on the sea level rise projected by the year 2020 in a superstorm like Sandy, we could be hit with nine, a little over nine feet of sea level rise, which would get into the first floor of our low lift pump station. Having said that, then our pumps with all the electrical would be, not be able to suffice to be able to provide water to the villages. So, there's a recommendation in here to water seal that and move the electric up so that we could do that. There's some evaluation there. There's a basic cost assessment of $20,000 to do that, but we have to finalize those and go forward with it. So, this is just a recommendation of the Crawford Associates. The other is the access road. The access road, Slate Dock Road, if anybody's been down there, has that hairpin turn and it goes down along to the tracks. It's very low. And it would, last time under superstorm, under Sandy, it was flooded for a period of time, but now it'd be flooded worse if we hit again. So, one of their short-term recommendations is to raise the level of that road while we address the issue of trying to move the road to an alternative location. One of the great things that I thought they came up with was that we could actually use the sediment from the lagoon to raise that road. So, we've been looking at cleaning out the lagoon. We could use that process, that material to actually raise the road as a short-term process here. So, there's, again, there's more work that has to be done to do that. But that's their recommendation for a short term because all of this could happen as early as 2020, three years, if we had another superstorm. And the last is the lagoon itself, the berm of the lagoon. We've been looking at that and trying to assess getting it cleaned. But the process is, we really need to eliminate the lagoon. We've had money set aside to do that cleaning, but it's not near enough to dredge it and haul it away. So, an alternative is to use that material to fill up the road and bring that road level surface up as a purpose of doing that. But prior to doing that, what we'd have to do is put in some sort of process to handle the sediment coming out of the water treatment plant, which is a screw-type press that would have to be used. And it's their recommendation that we also proceed with trying to evaluate putting in a screw press to handle that and then handle with the hauling of that. And there's, in this assessment, which I emailed to everybody and I hope you've had time to read, they go into very, into a lot of detail of what the cost would be and what our savings would be over time by putting in that screw press, which is about $250,000, which we would have to invest to do that. So, this is all preliminary. It has to go forward to be approved yet as part of the grant that we did. It is required that this go forward and be approved by the DEC, you know, and that's within the grant. So, the next step would be to finalize these numbers and then send it to the DEC for review as part of the process in the, in the grant that we received to do the study. So, I'd like to thank everybody that participated in that and helped to pull that together. And there's a lot more to come on the vulnerability assessment on that.
Gary, if I remember that house that we had for sale that joined the water treatment and remember the man came and asked for an extension or an easement or something?
Yeah.
We own that land, I think. Is it possible that we could put a road through there that's higher?
The engineers are looking at where that road placement could be. And it's, it's not only where the road is, but I don't think, I don't know if it impacts into that easement that the property owners are seeking. I don't think it does. And what we have to do is look at all of that aspects as part of it. To give you an update on that, I've been talking to our engineers. Their engineer, I believe, I don't know, their engineer sent the plans to our engineer last week. So, that is currently being reviewed by our engineer. Their engineer has requested a possible onsite meeting to look at this and go over it. So, I have not got an update whether they want to do that or not. I've asked them to look at the plans and determine whether an onsite meeting is needed and give us a recommendation. I know this has been going on for quite some time and we'd like to get the homeowners an answer on this as quick as possible, but it looks like it's finally, engineers have gotten together and shared that information.
So, it's up to our engineer to deem that property excess and not needed for the...
Not needed.
Right, so, so that's the next, we're supposed to hear back from...
That's what we're waiting for from SandTech, exactly.
And at that point, if it's deemed excess property, then we'll work with the engineers to subdivide a piece of that property and then we'll have to put it up for auction.
Yeah, it's, right. That's the process.
We'll follow the process, okay.
Yep. So, all right, continuing on. Any questions about the vulnerability assessment?
Well, I do have a question. When we started talking about this, one of the things that we stumbled upon is the fact that our plant is vulnerable. And not just with the rising of water, but also that it's vulnerable because it's not maybe as secure as it could be. So, you were looking into possible fencing options and surveillance and video surveillance. I wonder if you have an update on that?
I do not. John, had John, our Department of Public Works, has only provided us with one bid so far in terms of that. And so, we're looking for still two more bids, which we have not received.
On the surveillance or the fence?
Well, it was a combination of all of that put together into one. So, we have...
Well, they would be from different vendors. I don't think a fencing guy would...
It was the package all together and come back with a proposal of what that would be. So, we had one, you know, two months ago, but I do not have any updates. And I asked a couple few weeks factors anymore and there were no updates. But I'll continue to ask for that, so.
Yeah, I think that's really important.
Yeah, but no update on that since the last time I reported, we received a one bid.
I have a question about the low lift pump station. Is it currently underground?
Yes. The pumps themselves are below ground level, kind of like two floors. If you were going there, you have to go down into the lower level to get down into the pumps where they are. The pumps themselves are okay because they can run in a submerged fashion, but the electric that supplies them and that utility can't be. And so, the purpose would be to prevent some water by waterproofing that inside area and moving the electric up to the second, up to the upper floor.
Okay.
That's the short-term recommendation. There's also a series of long-term recommendations in here, which come into effect when you get out into like the years 2080 that we would have to address. What we need to do is, they're a lot more expensive and a lot more costly and will take more time, you know, to do. There's going to be grant money available probably in the 2018, 2019 period to pay for some of this. And we want to be in a position to apply for that grant money since this is part of that process. We are probably one of the first communities along the Hudson River to do this vulnerability assessment, which is kind of unique. So, we're kind of set the standard for a lot of other communities by, by working through this already and getting those numbers. So, good stuff. More to come.
And the sludge dredging, what's...
So, back to the lagoon, right? The last bid we received on the lagoon were about a million dollars to...
Bids for what?
To excavate the lagoon and haul it away. So, therefore...
So, the first bids though, we got, so two years ago, the ones that were three-year planned removal were $160,000.
Right, but the vendor, remember, do you remember a vendor didn't execute?
Sure, but that was two years ago now.
Right. And then we went out for bid again to change, you know, because the process kind of, the process that was used before, the vendor says we can't do it. So, we worked with the engineers at that time and said, all right, let's not define the process. Let's let the vendors define the process for us so we can come back with some realistic numbers. We let the vendors come back. We received three bids. They were in a range of $900,000 at the time, which we didn't have the money to do. During that cycle, the process came up to start talking about the vulnerability assessment and also came to talk about what is the right thing to do. And probably the right thing to do is to abandon the lagoons, which is why we started looking at what are the other possibilities we can do to process the material coming out of, out of the water treatment plant before, without dumping it into the lagoon. And all of this is trying to come together into one package right now from the vulnerability assessment, the weighting of what we need to do to clear out the lagoon, keep the lagoon and, or abandon the lagoon.
Is there a timeline for this? Because Heinz, because Heinz headed up this, this, we're talking like two and a half years ago. And this was a hot topic. And Heinz saw this all the way through and almost to the point, I think, when we received bids, transferred over to you and so then, but it's not as hot now? Because it was hot with Heinz. And so, if there was a timeline with this is that if it's going to go on for another, can we afford to go on another two years in this kind of holding pattern?
This, this report actually says that the lagoon is probably good for another 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's different than what we have heard from Heinz.
I'm, I can only go by what the information engineers give.
We should really look into the other report that we were, that Heinz was working off of that made it more of an immediate. I just wondered why there's such a big difference between, one was a two or three-year and the other one, now you're saying it's 10?
Yeah, according to this report, we probably have 10 years of life left in the lagoon.
Because the first one was Bernard Arios, I believe, right?
It was what?
Bernard Arios.
Different ones. I would, I would wonder what the difference is since they're so significant.
Right, and the cost is significantly different.
Well, it's interesting that the first bids we got were 160,000. How did they go from 160,000 to a million?
Right, well, the first, we had one bidder and he couldn't execute.
We didn't have one. We had, no.
We had more bidders. That was the lowest bidder.
One, the lowest bidder. Right, I'm sorry, you're right, the lowest bidder. But he couldn't execute and nobody else was there available. And then we went back to the same vendors and they all came in at much more than that. We probably had seven or eight people participate in the process and received three out of the last one.
They might have newer regulations that they have to follow.
So, what's the, so what is the timeline? So, you, you have 10 years to work with, is that what you think?
No, I said the lagoon has a 10-year lifespan. If you look at the short-term impacts of sea level rise, 2020 for a storm like Sandy and then 2018.
I think you're working a couple of different things here, right? So, but the initial project was this, was the sludge and the sediment.
So, I think that, I think the period on this, on the lagoon has more life than what was originally projected based on the information we have now. Not saying that we can't continue to use it. The recommendation now is to stop using the lagoon and come up with a process that avoids that so we can, don't have the process of cleaning out the lagoon ever again.
We should see if we can bring out the Bernard Arios report, just see.
Yeah, we can do that. All right, moving on, distribution system. Fire hydrant at Long Dock Road was taken out of service due to leaking. It's been tagged and bagged. We had a service line leak at 120 East Market Street that the customer took care of. And we had a water main leak on Montgomery Street, south of Hogg Bridge Road again. The highly road reservoir, no updates. Our other major project is the New York State, I mean, our Route 9 capital improvement project for the water line. We got requirements back from the New York State DOT. They're now recommending that we go under, we go, move it off the highway, which was our plan, and move it underneath the sidewalk. So, our engineers at SandTech are evaluating that proposal to see what that means to now physically move it from one location to the other. And I do not have any updates back from their review of that subject yet.
Well, you know, this is another one, Gary, that's a little disappointing because this is something that was supposed to be out to bid in December, right?
Right, we were supposed to have shovel-ready plans by December.
Supposed to, no, we were supposed to be out to bid by mid-December and then we're ready for construction early spring, so March to April. And so, we're obviously missing that. So, we're probably not going to be in construction this year at all. Is that what you're...
I'm, I'm worried about that timeline. DOT took forever to get us back to the results, the engineers.
Did the engineers submit it to DOT? When did they submit it to DOT?
I did it a long time ago. I don't know that they, it's out of my head. But that was submitted on our timeline to DOT. And it's been held up forever getting the response back.
I would ask, I would ask to find out the timelines with some of these things. So, I mean, it was very specific that the things that go out to bid be in construction in March. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that we're not only going to miss this construction season, we're also going to probably be subject to escalation in cost.
I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
No, I know, but I'm just, we have to manage the process. I mean, it's just a matter, the project matter, right?
And I've been working with the engineers every month on this, trying to push this along and get responses back. And I've been reporting on it every month and where we are in the process, right? So...
I know, I know. I've been seeing updates, but I haven't seen anything about...
The only thing that's new news tonight is, well, we just got back with DOT, which is brand new news. Brand new. So, we have to evaluate that.
The engineers should know, should know these things. I mean, they work with DOT enough to know that, you know, if protocolists did install these things under the sidewalk, then that's what they should have initially designed. I mean, we get this far into the process and all of a sudden, now we're going to redesign everything. And we're probably going to incur additional costs. If now we're moving everything under sidewalks, then they're going to do a complete redesign?
So, we're waiting for their recommendation on, is this something that we need to do or should we go back and press for...
Well, you might want to call them on that.
I already have. I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for them to respond.
Because we have a very specific contract with them for certain amounts. And I think that we, they should stick to those. I mean, especially if we're going to go through a redesign.
Yeah, right now, we're not doing the redesign.
So, do you have any feedback from them as to whether you think that we can go into construction this year?
Do not yet. They wanted to evaluate this and they also, they want to have a workshop with the board and come in and present that plan. So, that's one of the things that they've recommended that we like to do, you know, in terms of going, getting us, understanding where we are in this process, especially now we're in the budget cycle.
And when are we beyond the point of no return? So, at what point do we have, do we say, okay, no, we can't, we can't construct this year?
I need that answer from them because right now, I'm looking for their evaluation. And this is last week, hot off the press.
It was nice to know that in November.
Yeah, I agree. We didn't. All right, so, what's next? We also included for your information a resolution submitted for compound meters. Just to review for everybody, we do have compound meters in our distribution system. A compound meter means there's two meters. One is a low-flow volume meter and another is a high-flow volume meter. And currently, what we do is we charge based on line size. So, there's a recommendation by one of our customers that they would like to change that process so that they only get billed in accordance with the small line size, unless there's a fire or whatever, which we don't charge for line size, but if they use the other one. So, we're currently evaluating that. We're having a meeting tomorrow with Karen, Tom and John and myself to discuss that. It's going to get noon tomorrow if you want to join us in terms of looking at this resolution and understanding what the impact is to our distribution system if we change how we want to handle compound meters in the distribution system. So, that's going on. That's it for that. One personnel item, Brian Alex, who is a member of the Water Department, received his grade D distribution operator certificate this past month. So, congratulations to Brian.
Gary, is that hydrant on Long Dock that was taken out of service, is that going to be replaced?
Yeah, we have, we're down to one hydrant right now.
Okay.
So, the process is to order more hydrants and we've notified the fire departments that that hydrant is out of service.
Waste water, Kelly?
Okay, the wastewater treated was 4 million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was 34,900 gallons. And pounds of sludge processed was 5,393. And then we already spoke about the other major project, the Muffin Monster, which is for the Headworks project. We already took care of that earlier. That's it for the wastewater.
Okay, Tree Commission?
We have, we set the tree planting dates for 2017. All volunteers are welcome and note the hours count toward community service. It's estimated between three and six hours. Training will be provided onsite. Please bring your tools labeled as possible, including shovels, rakes, pick forks, gloves, sledgehammers, buckets and gloves. Both gloves and heavy shoes should be worn for precaution. We'll tell you the kickoff site as it gets closer to the date. But the two dates are Saturday, April 29th for our spring planting, starting at 9:00 a.m. And Saturday, November 4th, again, starting at 9:00 a.m. You can contact Meg Crawford at 846-206-1046. And if you would like to order a tree for your property, it's, we come and plant it at no charge to you. And you just have to come and fill out a request in the Cat in the Village Clerk's office. So, but we should have that information as soon as possible if you want it in the spring planting so we can plan our route and look at the site, see what kind of trees would work there and so on. We had a couple of requests from owners about trees that when Meg gets back, we're going to go out and visit the sites. So, we'll be able to get back to them by probably two weeks. And that's it.
Do you have anything for power lines, Gary?
No.
Okay. After special request, we have one from the Parkinson's Disease Support Group of Mid Hudson Valley. Would like us to declare April as Worldwide Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the Village of Ryanbeck. I believe we've done this every year, right, Pat?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion as such. Second, discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a request from the fire department to do their annual coin drop. Normal locations, the dates, do we have that date, Pat? Normal locations, the dates, do we have that date, Pat?
June 3rd and 4th.
What's that?
June 3rd and 4th.
June 3rd and 4th, and that's the same weekend as always?
Yes, it's the country living, I think, fair.
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion to approve that request as submitted. Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Next is Taste of Rhinebeck event, which this year, I believe, has been pushed further back into April, April 25th this time, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Still Tuesday night. So they may have done that for us because it's always on the same night as the village board meeting and we never get to participate. So thank you to the foundation for adjusting. Did this get, checked on all the dates on the calendar and certain dollars and P payment?
I sent it to everybody. I did not get a response back from, but I sent it to.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Does anyone have any comments on the, or anyone got any other business?
There's another request.
Oh, is it in there?
Yes.
Another client? What is it?
The New York State Government Finance Officers Meeting. They want to hold a AM breakfast meeting on either March 14, 15, 16, or 17.
Okay.
Karen, sir.
Do you guys have it?
Pardon me?
I'm just asking if these guys have it.
I put it in the.
Well, regardless, I think we saw it on email and I made the motion to approve the use of this room. The specified dates as requested.
Okay.
Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that was the last.
Okay. Other business? Anybody here?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't get there yet, but yeah, you can get the list. If anyone wants to address the board and you want to sign in, there's a list over there. Everyone got it that wants to? Oh, Kevin's coming. Gina, where are we at in the shared services highway?
I presume that's in Howie's hands.
Howie's hands?
Yeah, because he's the highway liaison.
Oh, oh. So did you formally request that Howie take over that project?
No, I, I'm requesting it now.
Okay. Oh, because the last we heard was that the town supervisor would only work with you and Gary on that project.
I think.
That was the formal request.
I think it was that she wouldn't work with you.
No, it was specific that she would only work with Gina or Gary on that project.
Well, I'm happy to continue on with it. I've got a meeting with Warren, we're plans.
That would be great.
So, I'll keep you informed about Howie.
Okay, that'd be fantastic. Anybody got any questions on the minutes? No? So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January as submitted. Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
We approved the minutes from January.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have a request from Tom Mulbank for a buyout of 7 vacation hours. I'll make a motion to approve that as requested.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming. Thank you for your patience. We will, just to review the public comment rules, we do have a three-minute time limit. So try to keep it brief. If you have anything more extensive, feel free to submit it to us in writing. We're going to start with Rebecca Stotts. Thank you. Come on up, just tell us who you are and what's happening.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Stotts. I'm Director of the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School. As some of you may know, it's been a nonprofit educational organization in the communities since 1997. We are located in the Rhinebeck Reformed Church. We rent space from them. They do not have a parking lot. And our issue is a parking safety issue for our parents who come and drop off their children around 9:00 a.m. and pick them up around noon. And usually it's 14 parents a day, Monday through Friday. So there's quite a bit of traffic. They currently use their flashers and briefly stop between the "No Parking Here" to corner signs and the stop signs that intersects Route 9 and South Street. The local police officers have had some difficulty with that lately. Understandably, they're worried about safety and some other people have been parking there not realizing we do it temporarily with flashers as the drop-off. What we'd like to request of you is that we could change those "No Parking Here" to corner signs to indicate a 15-minute temporary drop-off area during school hours. The other thing we were thinking of that might help with safety in the vicinity is a school zone sign. I think a lot of people may be unaware. There's, our playground is hidden way behind. There's not a big school sign out. It looks just like a quiet church and cemetery. And people don't know that, you know, some parents come in with infants, toddlers, and young children and it's difficult crossing the road. I spoke with Anna Pivort, the Secretary of the Rhinebeck Reformed Church. Being that we rent from them, I didn't want to speak on their behalf as well. Yet I wanted to check with them and make sure that we weren't asking for something that they didn't want. She said all the governing people that she knew who are currently with the church did not have any knowledge of a church policy that would go against this request. I also spoke with Bud Rogers, who's in charge of the archives, and he did some research. And he was also unable to identify what the church had requested for that parking. And lastly, I just wanted to make you aware that the church's food pantry has expanded greatly within the last couple of years. They got a grant. And it's open more often now. It has many, many patrons. It's Tuesdays 9 to 12 and Fridays 9 to 12 or 5 to 7. And many of its customers are elderly and many have difficulty walking. And we're hoping that this sign will also benefit those members. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Yeah, so do you have hours that, you know, if it were to be posted from where the drop-off and pickup is?
It would be about 8:45 to 9:15 in the morning.
Okay.
And then again, from 11:45 to 12:00 would be, if it was 15-minute time slots, would be.
11:45 to 12:00?
To 12:00 p.m. That would be ideal for us.
And then how about for the, for the food pantry?
Well, they're 9 to noon. So that would be like a 9 to noon, about those whole three hours.
Okay.
And their evening one, I don't think is a big issue.
Okay.
So Rebecca, this is only at the corner where it's being no parking now?
Exactly. There's about five or six parking spaces of space between Route 9 and that first sign. And obviously, we don't want anything right up against Route 9. That would be dangerous. That would be, you know, make it difficult for people to see. But there's some fair four spots that look like it still could be safe if they could make that just a zone for drop-off. I mean, right now, Aster, a lot of Aster employees park the entire length of South Street. And I currently park on Route 9, as does my co-teachers, whose cars have been bumped into and windows smashed and things, all within the last year, just from the traffic on 9. But we think it's so important for parents with young children not to have their children on 9. They need to be on, on South Street. That's our best option.
Have you talked to Pete Dunn about it, about safety?
Yes.
And how's he feel about it?
He told us to come here. He explained about Route 9 being a state road and they couldn't do anything about Route 9, which was fine. But he said that, you know, this would be the place to come and see what we could do about making it.
And maybe your teachers could talk to the Legion and see if you guys could park in the Legion parking lot?
We could. I don't know whether, do you know anything about that, Dana?
Can't cross the road with the kids. It would be way too.
No, but I just mean you're, you're adults.
Oh, we could, yeah.
The Legion parking lot is leased to the Aster Hall.
I thought so, right. I heard that. I thought about asking the Smoky Rock Bar work you during the mornings because they're not in business in the mornings. But I haven't had a chance to follow through on that yet. But that's another.
I was one of the founding parents for that nursery school.
Where are you? Oh, thank you.
And we were at, in the library.
Yes.
And so we had easy parking.
My son went there 16 years ago, so.
Do we have your contact information?
Nope, but I would have to give it to you.
Okay, so we'll set up a meeting, I'll meet with you and Sergeant Dunn and we can come up with a plan to put forth to have the village attorney look it over and see what we can do.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rebecca.
John Marvin?
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Marvin. I live at 29 Mill Street. I just wanted to go back to one of the agenda items that you had when there was the zoning and planning report and give you a little bit of information about the, the status of the old Hobson's site and what, what's going on and why the board should be interested in what's going on. It may be more than the normal report. Educate yourself on it. Ultimately, you may be asked to weigh in on what's going on there. So anyway, what's really going on there is, is the Hobson's use is no longer what's a prior non-conforming use. That's gone. So it's in a residential district. And what I want to avoid and what all of our neighbors want to avoid is the same problem that we've seen in other parts of the village. The best example would be Flat Avenue where you have Haven Spa, you have parking problems. You have parking problems on South Street in the residential district, which is just, you know, you're hearing about now for the school. You have one Livingston, you have one Chestnut. We don't have it there yet. And we could have it there because they want to put in a use that's really more like a restaurant than what is being labeled, which is farm market. It has 30-plus seats for indoor dining. It has picnic tables for outdoor dining. They want to sell ice cream, smoothies, prepared foods. It's really not a farm market. And why you should be concerned is what they've done is, is they've kind of, it, it's easy to fly under the radar, but they've slipped this into an agricultural district. And what they want to do is waive the agricultural markets law and say, your zoning laws don't really apply to us even if this isn't allowed here. And I think what's kind of unsettling to me is, is that the agricultural markets law is really intended to be a shield to protect farmers from, you know, unreasonable restrictions of municipalities that really prevent them from farming, really prevent them from selling their products, and help them stay afloat. And that's not what this is. So ultimately, whatever happens, right now, I've appealed the fact that this is even before the planning board. I've said that the zoning enforcement officer should not have allowed it to go there. And it will go before the Zoning Board of Appeals in March. The planning board will make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I can't speak for them, but my sense is that the planning board agrees with me that this really shouldn't be allowed there. It's not appropriate use there. I don't know what the Zoning Board of Appeals is going to say, but my sense is that they might agree with me as well. But I think you all should be concerned because whatever the result is, whatever condition the planning, if it goes forward with the planning board, whatever conditions they might put on it, or if they don't allow it, it then goes to the state, to the Department of Agricultural. And they're going to come in and they're going to weigh in. So anybody in the municipality can weigh in. The planning board, I'm assuming, can. The ZBA can. And of course, this board could weigh in too. And I think this board should be concerned because this is your zoning law. The village trustees create the zoning law, they pass it. And I think anybody that kind of comes in and says, hey, this doesn't apply to me. And they're kind of doing a roundabout way to say this doesn't apply to me. You should be concerned about it and you should educate yourself on it. So to the extent you want to educate yourselves, I'm available. You can always call me. I've sent some materials to some of you before. I can send it to the rest of the board members that may not have it. But it's something that I encourage you to stay on top of so that when and if you have to weigh in with the Department of Agriculture, that you will do that and try to support your laws in what should really be allowed in a residential district.
I have just two questions.
Sure.
So the Hobson's non-conforming variance has expired?
Well, they didn't really have a variance. Hobson's was there before there was any zoning laws. So under the zoning code, what that's called is a lawful prior non-conforming use. Under our code, you lose that use if you stop doing it for over a year, which they've been closed for several years. And in fact, the current owner was going to try to go that route because you can change from one non-conforming use to another, providing it's less intense. So I think that would have lost him that anyway. But one of the things that I agree with the zoning enforcement officer on was he told them, you can't do that. You know, you've lost it. And they confirmed with Hobson's how long they've been closed. So that's where this came about. They said, well, okay, how else can we try to do this? Let's apply, let's, you know, let's test the soils, let's get it into an agricultural district. And then we can come in and put in our plan that way and say, hey, we have ag and markets to protect us. You can't tell us what to do.
What hours are they looking for?
What, they want to do seven days a week. This is a farm market. Seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So it's not a farm market. Not the farm markets that you and I would think of as a farm market. So.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Dana Marvin?
Guys, I just stopped by.
Thanks for signing in. We know you're.
Her too.
Gwen Barden?
I kind of signed in too and wasn't here to speak, but I can say a couple words.
Sure.
While I, you know, have the opportunity to. I didn't know that we would have an opportunity to speak today. But I'm just here to, you know, support vacation rentals. And I would really love to be on that committee. I have actually spoken to some other communities in the area, supervisors in other villages and towns, and to see what they're doing to address the situation that we have here. And there were some good ideas. I spoke to the town supervisor from Woodstock specifically. We do not want to be Woodstock here. I understand that. But it was very interesting to speak to this supervisor and to discuss with him his thoughts on it. And so, and also, I'm in a group here that, you know, we, we all have different ways of viewing it. And I think it would be really important, and I'm glad that you're opening up, opening it up for discussion because I really feel that it is, it would be helpful and important to keep vacation rentals in Rhinebeck. And like I said, in a limited way, maybe a permitted way, and a way in which would not hurt the businesses here because ultimately, our homes, our values of our homes are really dependent on how viable our business district is. You know, if that starts to decline in any way, shape, or form, that is going to trickle out into our community. And that's pretty much all I have to say. And thank you so much. I don't know if you have any questions now for me, but. Okay.
Thank you. Leslie Kidder?
I just have, I have a dog and, or two dogs in, one raised.
Can you?
Yes, so, okay, fine.
You've got to get up here to make it on the camera.
Okay, so, oh, I see. Okay. I am the parent of an RCNS student, so thank you for your thoughts on that. I also live across the street from the Hobson's appliance store. And I'm very concerned, also basically second all of Mr. Marvin's thoughts on what they're arranging and that it is of much concern to the neighbors. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Jonathan Wexler, are you still back there? Oh, there he is. I'm behind a cameraman.
Good evening. Budgets, any progress on real budget numbers from 1415, 1516, aside the ones that are projected for 1617? That's where I was a year ago with you.
You commented to me that we used to have them out available. Is that not true anymore? We don't have them in the lobby anymore?
What, the budget?
Budgets, yeah.
I don't know that it's ever been on display in the lobby.
They were on the left-hand side as you came in.
They were available during budget times. They're available online.
Right before the budgets were going to be asked or proposed, they were available to people. But are you looking for budgets from a few years ago?
No. Where I was a year ago with you is just where I am now. If taxpayers have in front of them what was spent last year compared to what is projected to be spent this year, for me personally, that's useful.
How soon do you think we could get that available?
The one for this year is, is available, the tentative budget for 1718 will be presented to the board in mid-March. So I'm working on it now with Karen the Treasurer. And it'll be available, the new format that we're working on, similar to previous years. But it will have, I believe, the last two years of expenditures to look at. The current year-to-date and then the projected, or the proposed budget for the following year. So it'll have the history for each line, what was spent, what was budgeted, what was actually spent, and then what we're proposing to spend in that line next year.
Where I was with you, I believe it was at the end of March, was to come in about now and have 1617, which should be readily available.
Yes.
You had it just about done about a year ago. I wasn't talking about, you know, the future, 1718. I wasn't talking about, you know, the future, seventeen eighteen.
Yeah.
And to compare that to fifteen sixteen, which is already, should be readily accessible. And if possible, to have next to fifteen sixteen, fourteen fifteen. This, as I recall, you know, was the system that seems to be, I've been involved with educational organizations that do this, so you can see what was spent the last year, and you can compare it to what is supposed to be spent this year. If you are looking ahead to next year and have information, that's great. But hopefully, in the next, whatever, days, weeks, you can have what's projected to be spent this year and compare it to last year, or hopefully, fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen.
Right, yeah, that, the process, the budget season is dictated by state law. When the proposed budget gets delivered to the village board, when we start working on it, when it has to be presented to the, uh, made available to the public, and then when we have to adopt it. So it goes starting mid-March, uh, up until just before May first, I believe.
But that's sort of been the problem the last, you know, couple of years. All I'm asking for is the present and the past, not the future.
Well, it has to be readily available.
If there could be a handout, like in business, there could be a handout saying, "What was adopted by the board a year ago? The numbers that were supposed to be spent for fifteen sixteen are there. Sixteen seventeen is right in front of you."
Yeah.
You're, you're going to close the year soon, and then you could say what the difference is between what was projected and what is actually spent in different categories. But we do know what was spent in fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen.
Right.
And if you could just have that information available to the taxpayers.
Yeah, we have that, um, readily available, and when the new one comes out, it'll be on the same page. But if you want the one from the last two years, that's, that's available now. It's on, it's online, and, uh, if you can't find it online, we'll have the treasurer get you-
Yeah. In other words, say the last two years and the projected expenditures for this year.
Right.
It could just be a handout, whatever, on the table, you know, downstairs, whatever, for people, you know, to stop by. That would certainly satisfy my curiosity. It's not like I'm going to spend hours looking at it, but I can, like you can,
Yeah.
taxpayers can. You can see if there's a category that looks, you know-
Well, John, if you want to stop in, we can have Karen pull those up, hard copies for you.
I'm just asking in general, not for myself, and I'll stop by, whatever, next week, and then I'll stop by maybe the first week in March.
Yeah, we can absolutely get that for you, and then every, like you said, we have it here in front of us for the, uh, the year ending January thirty-first, I think we probably have in front of us, uh, right now. I know it says two twenty-eight, but I know that's not, that's not correct.
Thank you very much.
Every month, yep.
Is my name on there?
I think that's you. Fifty-four local, oh no, it's Kevin Curry. Sorry, Kevin, do you? Oh, you want to talk anyway? Sorry, Kevin.
You can go back. I just wanted to say thank you for, uh, for the work that, all you do, and, uh, for the willingness to look into these, a couple of these issues further by making committees, so, thank you. And I just actually had a couple later, I think, if you want to get you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your email.
Sorry, Kevin.
Hi, Jack. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Rehearsal time. Uh, first of all, I do want to thank you, the board, for carving out the vacation rental and the farm animal, animal issue. Clearly, there's a lot of passion around those two issues, as we saw in the last special board meeting you had. So I think that's like a really good decision. I think you've said you're going to promote public input. We're going to, uh, listen to the community on this. Uh, so, great. I did want to remind you, there was one thing in the, uh, proposed changes. It was the noise standard. Uh, the noise standard, as far as I understood, probably right now, I would be violating the noise standard that is going, that the ordinances prescribe for the local businesses. So probably important to make sure we take care of that.
So I would encourage you to come to the, so, so we have a draft now, of which we're going to carve out those three items that we spoke of earlier, but noise is, continues to be on the, the zoning draft. So with some new proposals, with input from the public from last time, so there are different aspects to it, and maybe a little bit different levels. So I would encourage the public to stay, don't, don't disengage because we're removing vacation rentals, but, because there's, this is still a very important document that contains other things.
Precisely my next point. Thank you for that segue. Um, one thing I'm wondering is those changes to these, to our ordinances, it's been worked on for two years, that I know of. And now we've, we've decided, you know, you've decided we're going to carve out part of it, but why are we going ahead with the rest of them right now? Why split this? Does, does that make sense?
It does.
And, and what is that reasoning?
Well, the reasoning, there are some things in here. Have you read through the document?
I have.
Okay, and there's some, if you come to a lot of the, the planning board meetings, there are lots of issues that they come across. There's some discrepancies in the document that they-
Absolutely.
There are some things that they are always faced with, that they always grant variances for, whether it be setbacks or those type of things. So there are pieces of this that are really simple, um, and easy to make changes to, that, you know, that's why we put together the zoning commission. The zoning commission are the members that really use this document, you know, every, every, you know, every other Tuesday. And so they look at this, and they come, there are issues that they come across that are problematic to them, or things that could make the process maybe a little bit smoother. Um, and so that's what this really, that's what this approach was initially. And then, since it hadn't been updated in quite some time, there are new things, like Airbnb's, that never were ever addressed, and, and the, and the document is quite dated too, because a lot of it, there was no definitions, and the definitions were off, and technology has changed. So I think there are some very useful, fairly simple things in this document that we should continue on this path. I mean, we're not going to close, we'll continue to meet with the public until we think we have a, a good and successful and, and good working document. We didn't want to weigh it down, in, in talking with the mayor and all the public comment we got, we don't want to weigh it down with the three really big, kind of critical, two big critical things. That may take some time. So we're just going to separate them, and we'll continue to meet with the public on the general document until we think it's, it's workable. And then we'll work on the side with separate committees, and we'll form the committees on the, the vacation rentals and the, and the farm adult piece. And then it may be that we merge them together, that maybe they'll come together at the same time, or maybe not. We'll just see how everything progresses.
For the record, I don't really care too much about the adult, uh-
Yeah, I don't think that's just the formality.
There's, there was no public concern of it. It's just that the, the language that the zoning commission came up with is contradictory to state law. You can't technically, apparently, from what I've seen, you can't just ban adult, uh, type establishments. So it has to be a little more, uh, delicately addressed in, in the code, so.
Okay. Do you have an idea, you know, you did talk about the public participation or the remainder of the ordinance changes. Um, do you have any idea when the new document will come out?
Well, so we do, so after the public hearings, we, and letters and emails and information we received from the public, we, the commissions met twice since then and, 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 uh, implemented some of the changes as they, you know, as the comments came in. Um, and they're now in the document. Um, but since we decided to take out those other items, so now the document, that, those things need to be taken out.
Okay.
So then, once that's officially done, we'll publish the draft and schedule another public hearing.
Do you have any idea of roughly the schedule on this? I mean, just roughly?
Roughly, uh, two to three weeks.
Okay, for the document to be published?
Yeah, I just need to get with the commission.
Yes.
And really, it's just a matter of cutting out those things and then issuing this draft.
Okay.
And then the timing, and then the public hearings will be here on this forum, and at the village trustees meeting. Um, and so it's possible that we could have it at the next meeting.
Okay, so is it, is there going to be-
I've not talked, I have not talked, excuse me, I want to make sure before these guys all jump. I haven't talked to the other trustees about that.
Sure, I mean, I know there needs to be a ten-day notice, a minimum, when those available. Uh, is there going to be any special, uh, meetings of the zoning, I mean, of the, uh, board of trustees to consider these, or will it be done in a normal, uh, meeting schedule?
There'll probably be a special meeting for the public hearing, just because of the volume of people that, that turn out. We, you know, don't want to keep everybody all night, so we've dedicated a separate meeting to that.
Okay, good.
Like we did last time.
Okay, so we're roughly maybe a month away from being able to adopt something that-
Not necessarily adopt.
Well, to really kind of get to the discussion, okay.
Because those breakout committees are going to have to schedule and meet and-
No, we're separating those two, just so you know. That's going aside.
Trying to get to the easy stuff.
Right.
We're, we're probably talking, we would, I'm guessing, uh, the goal would be to set the public hearing at the March fourteenth, um, village board meeting.
Okay.
So it would have to be ten days after that before we could, um, you know, schedule the, the public hearing.
Correct.
But we can't set a public hearing unless we're all here together, and the next time is March fourteenth, and we can't do it. Now, because we don't have the information yet, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
That answers my questions. One thing I do want to say about vacation rentals, uh, I know all of you all received the documents. Eighty-five percent of the hosts for vacation rentals in Rhinebeck rent less than ninety days. Just want to point that out. There's roughly on the order of more than ten thousand nights that a guest is in town. Um, you know, five thousand guests a year, two-point-three guests, you know, times the five thousand. So there's about ten thousand nights that people are in town to support the local businesses. I think it's probably very important to the restaurants. I'll leave that for now, because I know you're going to, uh, listen to this later.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mark Lindberg.
Excuse my dress. I, I worked late. I just got off the job. Um, I am the project manager on Will Trumper Drive that we extended. And we put in the water line, you know, the, is, is now a village water line. And we're being charged a thousand dollars for a tap fee for each tap that we, we did the taps ourselves, and we bought all the equipment ourselves. So for me to get a meter to hook up one of our houses, it's a thousand dollars, and I was just asking for some leniency. I know I did, we did the same thing in Red Hook. Not that I'm comparing the two villages, but they did give us a leniency on that, as we were doing all the work ourselves. I'm just putting that out there and asking, I'm, you know, about ready to get two more.
What did thirteen, what did we do with thirteen, you know, I'm not sure.
Same thing. I mean, generally, a tap fee, I think, includes, you know, actually doing the tap and buying the tap, and installing the line, get the curb stopped, which we did all that, um, out of our pockets.
Well, I think we should take this and go back and look at and see, and get back to you on it, because this is new news to me.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, I did ask about it, and I've asked about it, and I've asked about it, but it, this is the first time I've had a chance to talk to you guys about it.
Good. Yeah, so we'll take it and look at, you know, at what history tells us has been done in the past there, and, um, you know, go from there. Do you have, can you provide the specific request with the addresses and the, and all that stuff?
You sent it to us.
Yeah, no, I, I did send it in. I mean, we, we, we did one already, because the house is sold, and we've all done that. And I'm about ready to do three more, and I just-
Okay.
Yeah, I saw the email from Pat this evening that-
I, I missed the meeting last month. I, I have the dates wrong, so.
All right, so in terms, I think what he's asking for is, you know, you know, where, where's the document that shows that the taps and everything have been installed, and everything's ready to go?
Oh, the village engineer observed it.
Okay, all right, we can check.
No, what I was asking for was the request, and maybe it came last month, I don't know, but it says it was this address. This was the, um, you know, the amount, this is the bill you're looking at. Because what I saw just said, what you said, that you're managing the project in that-
I mean, like, I mean, there's six lots though, that are going to have village water on the road.
Yep.
And each of, I, we actually, one, we own a home, so there's five. One, we just sold, so actually there's four. I'm really concerned about that, for the other, the person that bought the lot too.
Right.
I think it should, you know, I'm trying to be grand. I mean, I don't know why we're paying for a tapping fee when there's, all we're doing is getting handed a meter that we're installing ourselves.
Okay. Yeah, this is, I mean, I think this can't be the first time this has come up, so Gary will look into it, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else who didn't make the list but, uh, wants to come up to the mic? Anybody else got anything up here?
I just have a question. Yes. We, we all have village email addresses, correct?
Yep.
It's correct. Through, and then we established those recently, right?
Since I've been here.
A while.
So, so then, and then, so our, when we sign off, we sign, at the end, we sign off as trustees, village email, correct? So is it appropriate that, that you sign off as Heather Proner Sotheby's on all of yours?
I have my, both of my, I don't know if that's on my, I don't even know how to change that on my trustees.
So when I get email from you, and when you send email from the village email address-
From my trustee account?
Yes, you're advertising-
Pat, will you help me on that? Try to log my signature?
I think that's-
Well, I think all you have to do is go to Tools, and it has a signature page.
So you had to set it up that way? You had to have been deliberately put-
Because that's how, that's how I put my signature on it. You go to Tool, I think it's Tools.
Because I'm worried when you email village residents from your email address, you're advertising-
My email address has that signature on it, and I think maybe it was just taken as my automatic signature. But I can come-
We can help with this. We can get that off.
Yeah, I have no worries about that.
You know, I'm pretty sure that you have to set it deliberately.
Yeah.
It, it didn't just appear there on the slip sheet, I guess.
So can I just ask that you don't send emails-
Call whatever moves on for you.
With that tagline on it alone?
Yeah.
I mean-
From my village trustee account?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussions, all is in favor?
Aye.